This meeting to order, the Michigan City Finance Committee. Uh, let's do the roll call real quick. Uh, Chairman Fitzpatrick present, Councilmember President Valinsky.
Hello.
Uh, Councilmember Tillman. They have two present and one at, one absent. So, uh, first up, we are going to review the, the claims for our, uh, February 16th docket for the, uh, council meeting. Councilman President Valinsky, had you had a chance to, uh, review the claims? If so, you have any questions?
Yes, I, uh, I have, and I was wondering about this, uh, invoice from, uh, the program of, uh, last year. And, uh, uh, it says scope, uh, 2020 and 2021. So, and then, you know, it's on their budget that they, I guess they have, uh, the budget is not supposed to exceed, exceed a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So I was, I was wondering if that is what's allocated last year for a two-year contract with Hassan Associates. Is that, is that, uh, fair assumption, uh, Mayor?
Um, I, I can answer that, Mayor.
Go ahead, Yvonne, please.
Um, no, that, the hundred and seventy-five thousand was the contract awarded to them last year in January. Um, yeah, they, they have been notified in, you know, that this contract expired on 12/31 of 2020. So this is the final invoice that will come off of that purchase order. So, um, I, I believe, um, Jeff Wright, the city engineer, is, is looking at, uh, new contracts for 2021.
My understanding, Yvonne, is that correct?
Will be liquidated.
Uh, I didn't hear you guys both were talking at the same time.
I'm sorry.
Uh, Mayor Perry, you were saying?
It's, it's my, thank you, Councilman. It's my understanding, uh, talking to Mr. Wright and, and I believe Ms. Hoffmaster, that the total billings, uh, from Hassan Associate last year were just like twenty, twenty-five thousand. Not very much, so we're, we're probably gonna just, uh, deduct that amount and then roll it over this year. Right, this, at this point in time, we have not given them any work, which is, I believe, my understanding. Is that, is that yours, Yvonne?
Well, um, I think we discussed that a little further earlier this week, Mayor. Um, Amber and I discussed this, and because the contract was, um, specific for 2020 projects, that we will have to liquidate this purchase order and, and then, um, then do new contracts for 2021.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And if I may, uh, Chairman Fitzpatrick, so that means that uh, we'll have a hundred and fifty-five or a hundred and fifty-four, two-hundred left over in that, for that purchase order. So my, my position is that we reduce that amount for next year so we can have that money set aside for other, other things. You know, cause then it's apparently, we don't need that much money in that account. That's, that's my comment to the administration going forward.
Yeah, well, Councilman Chris Valinsky, the balance on this purchase order will be returned to the unappropriated balance of the riverboat.
Correct. I understand that. What, my, my point is that if you make a con, you guys do a contract for next year, that you reduce the total amount. So that money is accounted for in something other than, uh, sitting in there specifically for, uh, those services. It can be used for something else. That's, that's what I'm making.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. I, I do believe that the contract will have to come before the council for review anyway, so, uh, we could look at it at that time. Um, I did have one question. So this says it was, uh, for a map for the community car crossings grant?
Are you looking at me, Councilman?
Uh, no, I was talking to, uh, Control Hoffmaster or whoever could answer.
Right, um, I, I don't, I don't, you, you know, that's something that, um, Jeff Wright had, um, asked them to do for him. So I, that's all I know about it. I don't know what exactly, you know, a vicinity and strip map, forty-nine pages. Um, you, I, I'm, I, I would guess that it had to do with the, um, with the community crossings projects that the, the council just appropriated the, the local share for. That would be my best guess, what.
I could share a little bit of light on that, uh, if I may. Uh, last, but thank you. Last year, we, uh, utilized two engineering firms to generate the Pacer documents, the eight-and-a-half by elevens, which broke all the streets down in Michigan City by, one was list by condition, another was listed by ward, and, and as I recall, a third one had, uh, verbal descriptions on that were, that were like main thoroughfare, secondary artery, and the two, the two entities that we used were Hassan Associates for that and DLZ. Uh, we didn't use anybody else. And, and I, I believe that was probably a map to support. I don't remember seeing the map crystal clear right now, but I believe it was a map to support the, the, uh, voluminous eight-and-a-half by elevens with all, all of the four-hundred-plus streets in Michigan City.
Okay, uh, were there any other questions, uh, in regards to the claims? Any other council members? Okay, um, is there a motion to approve the claims?
I'm, I'm moved to, uh, pay the claims.
Okay, we have, uh, motion by Councilman President Valinsky. I'll second that, uh, all the favor signified by saying aye. Aye.
One, one final comment on this. It's, it says the explanation on the invoice says the 2020 engineering and inspection services. So I don't think it has anything to do with the, um, project that was just approved lately. This is what transpired, but I could be wrong uh, with that, but it, it does say there's forty-nine pages of, uh, uh, information. So that'd be, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna con, I, I'll, I'll make a point of contacting the city engineer to find out exactly what that's on. Thank you, Chairman Fitzpatrick.
Are you, uh, were you in favor of recommending to the council to approve?
Yes.
Hey. All right, moving on, the next thing we had to discuss was the approval of additional appropriation in a budget of the police department of the general fund to provide funding for the leasing of ten police vehicles. And this would be decreasing general fund, one thousand and one unappropriated balance, one hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars. Increase account, one thousand and one, two oh two, four three nine point zero nine zero, one hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, police department, other services in charge, just contractual services. I know, uh, Councilmember Tillman had some questions. I know we've gotten, uh, numerous emails from the police department chief Coney. Uh, I think a lot of the questions that I had were answered through a series of emails. So, uh, Councilman President Valinsky, did you have any other questions in regards to the, uh, the police cars?
The, uh, one point that I would like to make is that there's, um, a news report being aired on the local radio station, and I don't, I don't know what was in the newspaper, but they made it sound like they didn't get any vehicles last year, which they did. They got three, I believe, and the, the rest of the funding was, was cut out for very good reasons. And I believe that the hundred thousand dollars for, for ten cars that were leasing, I wonder how much more it's gonna, if that's, how much more it's gonna cost to outfit them, or if it's worth just buying three cars or four cars for that hundred thousand dollars? And, and looking at a more efficient way of, of getting it done? Because at the end of the, is, is there a, um, some kind of, um, what do you call it, a umbrella in that lease that we can purchase the cars? Uh, after the lease runs out? Cause, do, do we know?
Uh, who are you directing a question to? Or is it whoever, if anyone can answer it?
Do we have any input, cause?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure about if there's anything in the lease to purchase these after the lease, but, um, this lease is a two-year lease, and this hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars includes the outfitting of these ten vehicles.
Yeah. That's everything? The computers and all that, all that stuff that needs to go in them?
I don't believe it's the computers, Councilman. I think it's the, it's all of the lights and the other electronics.
Uh, Mayor Perry, uh, were there computers that they would be able to transfer from, uh, other vehicles? Or I know that they had a few vehicles that were totaled out. So I don't know if they recovered any of that equipment from those.
Talking to central, uh, maintenance, everything that we, that central maintenance was allowed to strip out of the vehicles has been removed.
So, um, my, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, if anyone can. I know my understanding was these would be, uh, detective vehicles and vehicles, uh, detectives are currently driving will go back into patrol to kind of replenish some of the vehicles that they were missing from accidents or whatever. But, um, it did seem as if, I do recall, um, at the beginning of the year, there was something that, or maybe it was last year, where there were, it was a last-minute order placed for about eight vehicles, and, and you stopped that from going through. So I think this is still part of that need that they had back then to, uh, just replenish the, the fleet. I'm not sure their best.
Yes, yes, sir, it is. Yes, sir, it is. We lost eight vehicles due to accidents last year. And the, the vehicles, there's a little bit of a restriction that we have that because these are leased vehicles rather than purchased. It changed our whole cash flow from about four hundred and fifty thousand a year now to like fifty-five thousand, because you know this to a hundred and ten thousand for two years. But we're not allowed to, when, when you buy a vehicle, you do what you want with it. And because these vehicles will go back at the end of two years, we're not allowed to, uh, drill a lot of the holes in the trunk and, and the hood, or not so much the hood, but the, of in the trunk. We, we can't, uh, deface the vehicle as much as we have in the past when we purchased vehicles.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mayor Perry. Were there any other, uh, questions or comments from, uh, any other council members?
Yeah, Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Uh, Councilman President Valinsky, yes.
Uh, couple of questions. Uh, Yvonne, and I know that you sent out the amount of money that the, the city received back from the insurance company, uh, thirty-eight thousand, I believe, was for those three vehicles that were totaled out, correct?
Correct.
All right. So are we going to, uh, can we just minus, uh, the hundred and ten thousand? So in all actuality, we'd be paying seventy-two thousand four hundred and eleven dollars? Or is that thirty-eight thousand just going back into the general fund? And it's gonna be used elsewhere? And so instead of drilling it down, it'll be used on squad cars? Since it came from squad cars, put it back to the squad cars?
Well, the, the thirty-eight thousand dollars we received in insurance reimbursements was, was put back in the riverboat fund because that's where those three vehicles were purchased from. So that thirty-eight thousand is just sitting in the unappropriated balance of the riverboat. That money was never put in the general fund.
Okay. Okay. But if we wanted to, we could take it back out of the riverboat and put it back onto this, piggyback it onto this and make it seventy-two thousand four hundred and eleven dollars.
No, that's not how that works. The additional appropriation is going to say one hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars, no matter where we put that thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
Because it still needs to be appropriated to spend.
Right. No, I, I.
Because we are not replacing those three vehicles. So it would still have to go through an additional appropriation through the council.
So Control Hoffmaster, to satisfy what, uh, Councilman President Valinsky is requesting, it would have to be, uh, the request for the hundred and ten would have to be approved, and then an additional, can we fund, uh, send the thirty-eight or whatever to the general fund to offset that? Or is it, is it, you know, six in one hand, half a dozen in the other?
Um, yeah, that, because you would have to do an additional appropriation in the riverboat to transfer that thirty-eight thousand to the general fund.
Right.
And then if you wanted to spend that thirty-eight thousand, you would have to additionally appropriate it then in the general fund.
So two separate appropriations? You have to appropriate it to the general fund and then assign it to?
Then assign it to a line item, that is correct.
Okay, uh, Councilman Dabney.
Uh, Yvonne, I think it'd help if you explained, um, where the unappropriated money that's in the general fund, how it got there, and that's what we're using rather than dipping into the riverboat fund. I think that'll, that'll clear, clear it up. You, you explain it to me, that helps a lot when guys always.
Oh, okay, um.
Thank you, Councilman.
Right, I, I, I chose to, um, take this out of the, the general fund instead of the riverboat because I, I, I still would like to see that balance in the riverboat build up a little bit more. Um, we're up to about three million dollars, but in the riverboat fund, but I would like that to stay closer to six to seven million dollars instead of three. And the general fund was able to fund this hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars from its unappropriated balance. And there's a worksheet that we do for the, um, Department of Local Government Finance for all additional appropriations, where you list all of the revenues that, that the fund is anticipated to get. And the general fund, when you take in the property tax dollars, our miscellaneous revenues, and our January one cash balance, less the seven-point-eight million dollar circuit breaker leaves an unappropriated balance in the general fund of, of twenty-five million eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. From that amount of money, you subtract out the approved budget, which is just over twenty-four million. So that left on, an unappropriated balance available to be re-appropriated in the general fund of one million seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. So that was, when I, when I did this worksheet, I thought you, because this was not like a capital purchase, this is, this is a contract that we're going into for the police department that, that we should try to take it out of their operating budget instead of the riverboat.
True.
Thanks. Okay, uh, were there any other, uh, questions or comments?
Yeah, I, uh, Sean, I had one more, uh, question. Uh, Justin, pardon?
Oh, I was saying, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Uh, I know that when I, when I was on the finance committee and we went through this uh, appropriation before for fourteen squad cars, and I believe the mayor was on that finance committee at that time. If not, it was Councilman Schwanke, along with Councilman Beatry. And the police department wanted to get fourteen brand-new cars. This was, I don't know, eight, nine years ago, maybe, but anyway. Uh, well, we said, okay, line all your cars up down at the station, and we'll come down and we'll take a look at them. So out of the fourteen cars, they wound up getting eight cars because the other six were okay to still operate, and they used those cars for another two years. I understand what the police department's doing here. They're requesting ten cars. But I would think for us to do our due diligence, that the finance committee at least would have the, uh, uh, police department take those cars, put them downstairs inside the garage at the police department, so the finance, uh, committee could take a look at them and just give them a once-over to say, yeah, uh, they need them, and, uh, we're gonna go ahead and get them. Instead of just, uh, saying, okay, we're gonna get them because you say you need them. Uh, a good saying, good train of thought is always go take a look and see exactly what these, uh, people are asking for. So I'm just using that as a, uh, recommendation to the finance committee to, uh, to at least ask for that, and also to get the mileage on these vehicles that they want to, uh, uh, get rid of and see how old they actually are. I mean, if you're getting rid of cars that have eighty thousand miles on them, and I went through this exercise, the state police, and granted, they drive their cars on the highway, but they get a hundred and eighty thousand miles out of those cars. And eighty thousand miles for a squad car in the city of Michigan City is not a lot of miles. You got a long, lot more mileage to go. So I'm just saying, be cautious. Use your exercises, uh, check them out, go look at them. That way you know for sure that, okay, we need ten, we'll get ten. You want ten, we'll get eight. Just by, uh, you know, what I think we should do. Do your due diligence, thank you. I remember, hey, Don, I remember.
Uh, thank you, Councilman.
Don, I remember when we did that. Remember that, Dwayne?
Yeah, I was driving all over those cars, started them all up, raise the hoods.
Yes, sir, and how much money? And by, by not getting the fourteen cars that they wanted, we wound up saving probably another, uh, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars by just doing that one exercise that took, what, Mayor, a half hour? That happened, we felt pretty good that night. You know?
So just, uh, uh, Councilman, uh, Paul President Valinsky, one second. Um, just on that, on the, we're not replacing any vehicles. We're not, uh, taking any vehicles out of service. We're replenishing the fleet from vehicles that were, uh, taken out of service due to accidents. Am I right?
No, we are, they are replacing some.
There are some that are being, uh, cycled out.
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of.
Right, they're, they're taking the, the detective cars are going to patrol, and the, the detectives will be getting the new vehicles.
That was my understanding.
I think that's the way I understood it, though. But it's still.
I'm sorry, President, this is, this is, uh, uh, sorry, living in the past. Um, this is, uh, uh, as you said, this is replacement of damaged vehicles.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilman President Valinsky?
Um, for, for everybody's knowledge, and I, I did request a, uh, inventory of the vehicles at the police department, miles on them, who they're assigned to. Uh, I have that list and I'm auditing that list. And I believe that by the end of this exercise, we'll have a better picture on the fleet. And I'm not saying that I uh, wanna do this because I think that we need to look at how much it's gonna cost to replace them. You're spending that hundred, I'm looking at it in a different angle. You're spending that hundred thousand dollars when you can buy a car for, I don't know, is it, what, what was the last quote, thirty? Or to completely outfit a car was either thirty-three thousand or thirty-five thousand. So I'm looking at it this way. Is that, do we need to re, get that many cars? Or do we need to look at only getting, you know, a lesser amount, but purchase, purchasing them and lease less and give those, because you gotta have less miles on them, give those to the detectives? Cause the, the, and, and get a, maybe, maybe a longer lease on them um, for, for the detectives? Cause I guess we're gonna find out how much they really drive in a year and, and what's going on with this mileage on, on the vehicles? Cause I saw a couple cars, I saw a couple cars on that list, and I just took a close glance at it. This, some of them had ninety thousand on it. And, uh, so I don't know who manages the fleet. You gotta, we gotta talk to who's ever managing the fleet? Cause I know that, I don't, I don't know if they have somebody that, if, uh, who would do that? If, uh, one of the deputy chiefs do that, you know, in charge of operations? Um, but there, there's a lot of questions to be answered, no doubt, Don, and, uh, to, to make the right choice, to either buy or lease. I think that, yeah, you're saving some money upfront, but you're, you're only gonna have those cars two years. And say if you turn a car in with, um, ten thousand, ten thousand miles on it, there's, uh, I'd like to know if we can purchase some at the end of the lease, personally. You know, it has any? Who's seen the contract? Has anybody seen the contract? Or is it? I haven't seen it. Has the board of work seen the contract? Mayor?
I don't, I don't recall seeing it, Councilman, but I, I would like to add, though, that there are a few other benefits that are, are not right-of-way surface, no, uh, recognized leasing these cars. The, uh, the Ford explorers are, appear to be a very high-maintenance item. Uh, if you, if you have a conversation with Cranston Harris, he can tell you how many police cars he has to work on all the time. And this takes the maintenance, the brakes, uh, the water pumps. It takes all this out of the equation because they all come as part of the lease. So the, you, you will, you should see a, a sizable impact on the central maintenance cost of servicing these vehicles.
With that, with that train of thought, Mayor, is that these are gonna be brand, these are gonna be brand-new vehicles. There shouldn't be really too much maintenance involved with them. The problem is, is looking at the fleet. The problem is, is looking at the fleet. I think we gotta evaluate the fleet and look at, and that's a good point, because I'm gonna get ahold of Cranston and want a maintenance schedule on some of these cars and red-flag these cars that are, as like you said, they're at a point now where they're costing too much money. And you're right, that the Ford, a four-wheel-drive vehicle and that type of vehicle, once you get miles on it, they are high maintenance.
They could nickel-dive you to death, you bet.
But the whole thing is this, is to be quite frank, is not to say who's wrong or who's right, but we need to have a real in-depth audit of the fleet. And if there's cars that need to go, they need to go. And I wouldn't have a problem with getting a new vehicle, but I want to say this. Since we're all here, is that I don't think that people that we're having a problem with on their driving habits should get a decent vehicle. I think it's like, you know, one of your kids. Your kids get in a wreck? Well, we're gonna rotate you to the worst car that we have, you know, because you're not...
That probably works. That probably works with kids, but I don't think we want our officers out here in substandard vehicles.
What I mean is that when you're having that amount of wrecks, and I'm not trying to point the finger, but internally, and I can understand, I can understand that we got new officers coming on and younger officers. But I'm just...
Yeah, I think we can probably get some more of those answers from one of the chiefs. So is there anything else? Anyone else have any other questions or comments in regards to this? Is there a motion for a recommendation to the council or?
I'm not gonna make a motion because I'd like to see the contract before we get a positive recommendation.
Okay. All right, having no recommendation. Okay, well, let's move on to the next thing we have. Appropriating additional appropriation in the budget of the Recreation Department of the Park Fund to provide additional funding for lifeguards. Decreasing Park Fund. I got a little blurred right here. But the amount is $36,260 for salaries and wages, seasonal wages. So Councilman Presmeneski, can you have any comment on that? Or question?
I would like to... I'd like to hear what the sponsors of the ordinance have to say about it.
Well, I know they just had a review of this at the Park and Rec Committee met to discuss it. And it seems like a lot of that was kind of hammered out as far as what the need for the pay increase and for the amount of lifeguards that they were gonna have. So I did take a look at those matters. I don't know if you had a chance to look at those yet. I think they'll probably just reiterate some of that. But from our perspective from the Finance Committee, we're basically looking to see if it's feasible to remove that, to switch those line items, basically, for the amount of $36,260 for the additional lifeguards, basically to make the pay competitive. I know we caught a lot of flack last year for not having lifeguards, even though the beach was closed a lot of the summer. But I think the community made it clear they wanted lifeguards out there. Councilman Don Presmeneski?
Yeah, Mr. President, just to reiterate some of the discussion we had last night and talking to Assistant Superintendent Eason and to Superintendent Shin. And just to start the discussion, here's where the real points at. We all know that we want to have lifeguards, and we're gonna try our best to fill the 14 slots that there are. But the amount of money that we're looking at appropriating for the 14 lifeguards is basically the same amount of money that we spent last year in overtime for the Police Department and the Fire Department working the beach. Okay? What we're gonna get out of lifeguards is we're actually gonna get people that are gonna go out in the water and do water rescues whereby the Fire Department, if you're working down at the beach, you don't have to know how to swim. Okay? Some people do, some people don't. So, you know, you're really not getting your bang for your dollar there. The Police Department, they'll patrol the beach, but they're not going in the water because they're not taking their gun holster off their side and laying it down on the sand. So they're doing beach patrol, but they're not doing water patrol. So we all feel very strongly, and the common sense way to go on is is to appropriate the money and try to hire these 14 lifeguards back on and go in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. So with that being said, is there any measures being taken right now to attract people, candidates for these positions? Or is it something that's gonna wait until it's time to start hiring and then start trying to reach out to fill these positions? Because I saw where the comments were made that if only eight were hired, then the schedule would reflect that. So if they're not able to hire the amount of lifeguards that they're seeking, what's the plan for that at that point? Are we still gonna be paying the police to be out there just so there is some coverage of the beach? Or what's the plan for that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, we are gonna have to have as much coverage as we can muster. Right now, very shortly, it's gonna be time to get in touch with the YMCA to see where they're at with the Red Cross. Because the YMCA provides a training course for the lifeguards, and then the Red Cross certifies. Now, if this COVID continues with all these variants, nobody knows for sure what's out there and how long it's gonna happen, how long it's gonna continue. If it continues, it could very possibly have a strong negative impact on the number of young people that want to go through the training course and become certified as a lifeguard. So it's a little bit of an unknown at this time. Probably about spring break, when the kids are getting, you know, when the weather is breaking and they're starting to think about what they're gonna be doing this summer, we can probably get a lot better feel from the Red Cross and from our YMCA.
Okay. Control, Hockmaster. So this amount that they're looking to move, the $36,260, does that cover the salaries or that just covers the pay increase?
That just covers the pay increase because we've already budgeted four lifeguards based on the initial pay rate that was put in the original salary order. So this $36,000 covers the pay increase.
So the original order is already budgeted for 14 lifeguards?
That is correct.
Okay. And this would be, okay. So now, if this, if you're unable to get the amount of lifeguards you're seeking, is there a way to take these funds and apply it towards overtime for fire and police since it's essentially the same thing? Or would it have to come out of their budgets?
No, that would have to come out of their budget. And if you wanted to increase their budgets, we would have to bring another additional appropriation before the council.
Okay. Okay, Councilman Presmeneski.
With what Don, or Councilman Don Presmeneski has said and what the mayor said, I want to talk about one thing that Don did bring up during the summer is that people that are down there patrolling couldn't swim. So I guess we're at this point now that these things are coming out. And I think that we, and I'm saying, the people that are elected to office, I just can't, it doesn't sit right with me having somebody down there that's supposed to be performing public safety not being able to swim. So I guess I'm gonna ask the mayor if the case may be that we get 10 life, and I say maybe, get 10 individuals that want to be lifeguards if we're even at that point on opening the beach up. Are we gonna have people down there that can swim? And if we're gonna, you know, they want to volunteer for it, I think they volunteer for it. Am I wrong or right on that, Mayor? But they should be able to swim at least 50 yards. 50 yards isn't that, that's two lengths of a pool. So we have to internally do something to provide safety and make sure that these people can provide the service that they're supposed to be doing down there. And I think that's a very good point that Councilman Don Presmeneski brought out, that little be knowns to us, I don't even know if anybody thought about asking him that, if they knew how to swim to patrol the beach. So it was an oversight, but I think that needs to be corrected. Do you have a problem with doing that, Mayor Perry?
No, sir. No, sir, Councilman, I do not. It's a little bit of an unknown now. You know, we talked a little while ago about the cost of buying police vehicles versus renting, or leasing, police vehicles, something I thought about last year, but it wasn't in the cards, is that eventually I think we need to possibly lease, I think it's probably a good possibility, a rapid-response rescue vehicle, something like an oversized jet ski. And then it eliminates a little bit of the need for people, lifeguards on the beach that can swim because they can wear a life jacket. And this way, rather than having to fight the water to get out to rescue somebody, they could go out one or two on that vehicle, that rapid-response vehicle, able to throw a life jacket to the person in distress, get him tied up, and then pull him back into shore. So I think there may be a better, smarter way to do it if we don't get the volunteers or the kids aren't getting certified. We just have to think out, you know, try to think out of the box and think of ways to do it, get around our shortfalls. Shortfalls being people that can't swim.
Mayor Perry, is that something, this rescue vehicle that you're referring to, is that something that DNR or Port Authority would already have that maybe we could request that they assist with some of that stuff? Or is it, there's no way to make those departments work together like that?
At this time, Councilman, I don't know. We could certainly meet with them because they do have resources that we don't have.
I know it's Michigan City Beach, but it's the Indiana Beach as well. So you would think there may be some type of...
It's open water. It's open water, and the Coast Guard is responsible for it, as is the DNR.
Okay. That sounds, I like that idea, too. That does seem like that would free up individuals who may not be certified to swim, but at least could notify the rescue team to possibly do a rescue versus notifying someone to do a recovery later.
Absolutely.
Okay. I see Councilmember Tillman has gotten on. I don't know if she had anything to add with this.
Thank you, Councilman President Fitzpatrick. In regards to that, I'm glad that some of everything was elaborated on. My concerns were, I didn't get the beginning part of it. So I apologize for that if I'm not gonna convey this based off of the information since I'm just joining into this Zoom meeting. Because my concerns was in regards to what the lifeguard and with the lifeguards, pay increase. First and foremost, I support that there should be an increase because of the extenuating circumstances and the stability as far as the importance of them putting their lives at risk for someone else's life. And you really can't put a price on that. But to get qualified in some good skilled individuals, and at times you have to pay for that. So I don't oppose increasing for that purpose. I had a concern with the purpose of, why was there a need of a hierarchy as far as the different three positions for lifeguards out of a total of 13? When, if that's the case, then it should have just been one director or someone that will oversee the lifeguards in itself if that's the case for a chain of command.
Does anyone want to respond to that? I know some of that was discussed at the Park Committee meeting, but I don't know if Chris...
I can answer that, Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Okay, go ahead.
The reason that we have three top lifeguards in the chair is because we're operating seven days a week. So if we had one head lifeguard, they can't be there seven days a week from 10 to 5 on the weekends and 10 to 6. So we have three trained top guards, but somebody has to answer to the superintendent or it used to be the Recreation Director when we had one. But somebody has to have the ultimate responsibility. So the three of the guards share the supervision position through all the shifts, seven days a week. But it's the ultimate responsibility of that head guard to report back to the Park Office. If you had three on the same level, then you get into the finger-pointing of, you didn't turn your reports in, you didn't do that. Well, that was so-and-so's responsibility. So in a good hierarchy structure, there has to be that point person. And that's why we have the two assistants that can do pretty much everything the head guard can do. But you have to have somebody that answers to the superintendent. And that's why it's that way.
Okay. And again, I do apologize. I was not able to attend due to the gentleman that was killed on Friday was my uncle, and we just laid him to rest today. So I wasn't able to gather that information. So that's why I'm re-asking those questions now at this time.
And we're all very sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's sad.
Were there any other questions in regards to the pay increase for the lifeguards? Councilman Presmeneski?
Yeah. Well, of course, I'm in favor of that. But I would just like, if I may, ask the mayor a question getting back to that rapid-response vehicle. Are you talking in the sake of a, like a ski-doo that would be out there
That would be out there so a lifeguard could jump on it or whoever could jump on that ski doo and go out and throw a. A lifesaver. Ring out to the person that's in distress. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, sir, I am, Councilman. Yeah, I, I'm not real familiar with the different sizes and models that are available. Uh, but that's, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
Okay, you know, and I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up because that was something that I was, uh. Looking at a couple of years ago and he went down and I was talking to some, uh. Business owners in town to see if they would donate one to the, uh, to the park department for the lifeguards to, uh, to use. And I think whatever happens here with the lifeguards, whatever happens with the police, whatever happens with the fire department. That the park department and that the city should still invest in a ski doo to do water rescues out there in the park. Uh, on the lake, forget about having to swim, you know, out to these people, get on that ski doo and get out there. And get to them in a matter of seconds. And I think that would be a real benefit. To the, uh, park department and to the anti-drowning. Campaign that I know Mr. Shin is, uh, all in favor of and, you know, we're all trying to do our best to make sure that. Things like that don't happen, but I would make that as a recommendation for the park board to, uh. Purchase one of those and, and to the mayor.
That's our goal, that's our goal, Councilman. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman, uh, Paul President.
Yeah, I, um, wanna. Get into something that I talked to Ed about. Uh, a week or s- maybe ten days ago and that. I, I, I'll tell you that the reason why I bring this up about people not being able to swim is. Usually somebody who doesn't. Know how to swim. Is not. It, it's something. That they're not gonna jump on, uh. Um, they might hold a rope on the beach mayor, but they're not gonna jump into the water. Okay, I mean. That, that's my own, that's my own observation. From being in, involved with, uh. Water. Uh, qualifications and people taking their swim tests. Um, to go to, uh, camp every summer. And participating in those, uh. Tests. So the, the thing is, is that you're more. Um, apt to get into water. I, I don't even believe somebody that doesn't know how to swim is gonna go. Past their waist. So I, I really need a commitment by the administration that we're gonna have. People who are qualified to swim. That know how to, know how to do a rescue. The right way or participate in a rescue the right way and create a water. Safety rescue course for. Through the, you know, the gentleman that spoke at the last meeting. Uh, that is into, uh, water safety for. Our public service officers. So. I can see supporting this, but I can also see supporting a, a, um. Operation like Baywatch because. It's actually a, a two mi- it's a team. You drop a person out there to do the rescue. On who, on a, a motor, you know, a powered, uh. Personal. Device. I, I, I don't know the exact terminology for them, but that's a real good idea. But it's just like having a, a fireman jump on the back of that thing to save time. You know, a guy that doesn't know how to swim isn't gonna jump on there, mayor, and. I just gotta tell you that, that's, that's an observation because. Swimming. And that's where we did our test at the Y. Is we, we gotta promote more water safety and I think that that's a good way to do it. With getting these guys qualified to swim and sending them to the Y. And, and getting them involved with water rescue. Because you never know on their day-to-day basis, they might have to get, rescue somebody out of a drainage ditch. I think this is a good format to, to expand our, our public safety in, in our community. Through the fire department and the police department. Um, so, and I also told Ed that I think that, or I brought, suggested that I think that. We should also. Develop a brochure to give the people when they enter the park. And there's, um, even a com day because. I, I watched a program on one of the, uh. Um, ser- service stations on TV about. People. Or no, I'll take that back. It was a radio program on talk radio that. People don't even realize somebody's drowning and they can be fifteen feet away from them. Because that's how oblivious they are to somebody needing help. And I, and that. I think that we need to. Have a commitment and follow through on it to make our. Beach safer. I think that's a great idea, that, uh, rescue device, but that takes teamwork. And I think that we can have a lot of water safety. And stimulate this whole thought process. By. What we're doing right now, discussing the lifeguards. Cause those, those people.
I think that's a more, a more broader, broader discussion, but I, I do agree with that point that we should have cross training and more people should be. Certified or qualified to, to get in water when necessary, especially our, uh, first responders. So. Um, if, if, if there's no other discussions about this, uh, is there a recommendation?
I'd make a motion to. Spend the, what is the monetary amount to transfer the monetary amount? Is it thirty eight or?
Thirty, thirty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars.
Make that motion to approve, approve that money. For additional pay for lifeguards.
All right, I second that. Uh, all in favor, sitting if I was saying aye, aye. Okay, that passes. Uh, okay, so the last thing, this is kind of two things, but we can work on them together. So, uh. Amendment ordinance forty-five, forty-nine, uh, commonly known as the twenty-twenty-one salary ordinance to add the position of park maintenance director to the park department. Uh, so, uh, opened up to the committee first, Councilman President. Do you have anything, uh, any questions or comments about that?
I talked to Ed about this and, uh. I thought, oh, I thought a lot about it. And, uh, I, I really have a. First of all, I guess I have a problem with eliminating, uh, somebody's, I don't know. I look at it that, that individual that's a temporary, a temp or seasonal worker. Comes there, he, the, that individual comes there to work or they hire somebody from high school. To work as a temp. So now you're losing. Uh, an individual. And. Ed explained it to me that they had two people running as working foremen's. And now they're gonna, I guess, decrease their pay. Is that correct, Ed?
No, their pay will not be decreased.
Okay. So. You're making a position. And I just don't understand why it's not working right now.
No, um, I'm sorry, Councilman. Uh, am I allowed to speak there, President?
Yeah, uh, 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 please, uh, Mr. Chan responds to that.
Thank you, um. You mentioned that, uh. That they were getting a pay cut. They are not. And you mentioned why it doesn't work, but the original. Flowchart. In this department was designed to have a director and, um. It doesn't quite work without one. And I, I can explain that if you like.
Please.
Several years ago, nine laborers and one director was eliminated from the park department maintenance group. My decision to reinstate this director position originates from three things. My observations. My discussions with individuals affiliated with the maintenance department. And my research. My observations are that I see inefficiencies. And deterioration of facilities and buildings caused by the absence of a director. My research is that it's noted in the park department master plan. That it will be important. To reinstate the nine laborers and the director position to maintain acceptable levels. Now that was written in the. Maintenance five-year plan. Now, my decision to reinstate this director first before hiring back the nine laborers. Is more effective and will not require any appropriations of funds.
See one drop to a nine.
The park department, if you think of it in three main branches of concern. Recreation. Grounds maintenance and facilities. Recreation and grounds maintenance have kept their pace. With these nine people short and the director gone. The grass has been cut and the snow has been plowed. And there has been recreation except for COVID. But the maintenance of buildings and facilities have not been managed. The result of the director's absence is causing the deterioration of buildings and facilities. In my professional opinion, in the park department, if the park department continues to operate without a director. The untrained eye will soon see the decline that I see in the park department's buildings and facilities. As time passes, the cost of these repairs become exponential. And I came up with this. To give you an idea that. The original flowchart was designed with a designated director. And as I look at his job description. It has in there that. He is supposed to develop and implement procedures and practices to accomplish maintenance of all park facilities. And utility sites which include building maintenance, grounds and facilities. So without this director's position, I will say. That by me observing these, I don't just stand there and look at them. I've been going out with my other jobs. That I have in my. Job description. And gone out to these buildings and I'm doing my best to maintain them. But I can't be in two places at once and I just urge you. To understand that that director's position was pulled away and it should be reinstated. So the park can. So the park can maintain these buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Um, I got a, uh, one second, Councilman, I'll give it to you. Uh, so how, how many buildings are needing to be maintained at this time that the park? The, uh, park department is responsible for?
Okay, Mr. President, uh, we have the brand new building of North Point Pavilion, which has design flaws. And I can explain those to you. We have Memorial Park. Memorial Park looks fantastic from the road, but if you look close. The columns are rotting at the bottom, at the bases. We have. The golf course, which we are now. Refurbishing the mold that got in there because there was no director at the time to. Understand that this building has to be monitored. So the mold grew. Now we have to spend a couple thousand dollars. It's taken me away from my job. Managing this, uh, there was no director to see that the downspout had been missing for. I don't know how many years and water has created. Uh, a flow towards the building and created mold on the inside of the basement. I can go on and on. I have pictures of. I have pictures of the fencing at Patriot Park. Not one gate works, not one press box door is, is free from rot. Uh, I can go on, but I have been an inspector of construction all my life. And I urge you to bring somebody in so this, these buildings don't. Start to deteriorate more.
Okay, um, so, uh, uh, on that point, uh. Who, who works at these facilities currently?
Okay, let's take Patriot Park for instance. Patriot Park has a grounds keeper. So. If Patriot Park needs inspections, everybody's working on a lawnmower. Um, there is no director other than myself that I go out there and I was urged by the grounds keeper. To come out and look and see because, Mr. President, if you drive up to Patriot Park, it looks like one of the most beautiful parks in the world. But if you get on a golf cart with the grounds keeper, he will show you that all of the fencing has, has been damaged from the high water table. It all needs, uh, repair. Not one gate will swing open, uh. The press boxes, like I say, are rotting away. Nobody has changed the doors in so many years that they're rotting. And your question was, who is actually looking at these buildings? Uh, for instance, North Point Pavilion has a, uh, the, the actual. Persons in place right now that have been designated part-time worker, part-time supervisor. They send people out to make sure there are no. Water leaks during frozen times. Uh, we do spread ourselves thin, but there is nobody in the position. To fulfill this job description as a director. So for instance, Memorial Park, uh, is very well taken care of with the lawn. Uh, the garbage is picked up. Uh, this crew works very hard, shorthanded, but there is no person. To monitor and direct the buildings and facilities.
And that's been, and that's been in place for, you said, how many years since?
I said several, Mr. President, but I think in about four or five years that they have not, we have not had a director in this department.
And, and so you're saying, and in addition to. This director, there's gonna be an additional hire of nine people that are gonna work under this director?
Well, I'm not gonna propose the nine people because we don't have the money for that right now. I think that if we. Reinstate the director. We will see more efficiency. Than we would even if we hired two or three seasonals. I think it needs direction and it needs monitoring. And we'll worry about, and I would like to have, of course, um, the crew would like to have the nine people that were. Let go several years ago, but I think we need to start with what doesn't cost any money and that would be shifting people around. Within the, within the department, no money will be appropriated. But I will have a director to monitor and supervise. At a scale that it was designed to be.
Okay, so if you're not looking to hire these people, you're looking to do more work. With the same amount of people and just have someone else telling people who are already assigned to jobs. That they now have additional tasks?
Well, no, I would say that's a, that's a good point, but I would say that some of that work has to be redirect. For instance, uh, right now we have, uh, just a little bit of time before, uh, the leasing. Who operates the restaurant in Sunset Grill, for example. Well, Sunset Grill needs, needs work. And, um, there is a, if there were a director, he would be able to see and make lists of everything we need to do so that restaurant is ready for that. Leasing. Now, if the workers are painting garbage cans, which. Needs to be done, but if it's more important to get the building ready for the restaurateur. Then the director would be able to say, no, you could. be able to say, no, you can paint barrels when, when we have time to paint garbage barrels, but I need you to get the restaurant ready, for instance.
Right, so, so, yeah, that, you just made my point for me. So you'll be taking people away from jobs that need to be done to do additional jobs that you really need people for?
No, I think it's prioritizing. I think it's prioritizing, and that's what a director would do.
So rather than a gate rusting out, we'll have garbage cans rusting out, which we still would have to replace those at some point if, if they're not maintained, so.
I'm, I'm not saying that, that more work is going to be, see, I think it's prioritizing work. I don't think I'm gonna be adding work, but for instance, the stairwell of the North Point Pavilion was heating up so much from the sunlight coming in that the elevator stopped working. So someone took the air conditioner down before I got here, and I found out they took it down because it wasn't cooling the stairwell. Well, with that air conditioner taken down, taken down, the elevator went out of service. Now, I, I can't be monitoring every building with what I have to do, but if I have a director and he can monitor things like that, that would have saved us thousands of dollars having to get a new air conditioner.
All right, I just had one more question, then I'll give it to Councilman Preszulinski. Councilman Paul Preszulinski, so the, the director that you're proposing, who would they report to?
They would report right to me.
Okay. I would like...
Can I make a comment, please?
One, one second after Councilman Preszulinski.
Thank you.
So with yourself and your assistant superintendent, you can't direct the people that you have to do the things that are necessary to maintain the properties that are currently under your supervision?
Well, now, let's look, let's look at my job description. There, there are many things that I have to accomplish, but not one of them are the maintain, it's maintenance of the buildings and facilities. That would be taking, if I did that, that would be taking me away from my job description, which, which I have been doing because I can't just stand here and see these buildings deteriorate, so I'm spreading myself thin.
That's fair. Okay, can you send me a copy of those three job descriptions?
Two or three.
Your description, your assistant's description, and the, the director that you're proposing?
Sure, I sure will.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Preszulinski?
Thank you, Chairman Fitzpatrick. Mr. Shin, I, first of all, would like to zero in on when this director was, you say, eliminated or just not, if it was in the budget or was not filled by the previous administration. Another point is, don't we have somebody running the golf course? Don't, don't we have a maintenance crew out there? And don't we have a, what is the responsibility of the, the pro? Do we have, still have a pro out there that's, and what does he do? Just manage the store? Doesn't complain about anything?
The pro is contractual, and he does manage the store, and he sells his wares. He sells golf clubs and golf paraphernalia, and he runs the outings.
Okay.
Now, to answer your question, there is a director position at the golf course, and when I started my job here with the city, I noticed a lot of deterioration of the buildings and found that he was not monitoring the buildings. His job was to maintain the turf. Well, those things were discussed, and now he has retired. So I will be finding a director that can fill shoes that will be now monitoring the entire golf course.
With that being said, that those, those people out there were shorthanded. I went out and visited them last year. I visited almost every site that you had talked about today, and I had visited Patriot Park, talked to gentlemen out there during the budget process. And I guess what my, if you've already noticed all these things, have you put in works orders or come up with a, I, I mean, you know, beyond, you know, the scope of your job, it's just your job description, you know, that's just guidelines.
Okay.
That's just guidelines. You're supposed to be looking past that, and I think you got a responsibility to, if you see something, you say why, and if it, because the bottom line is this, you can talk about wanting to get all this stuff fixed, but it's gonna take money. And it, it, just like fixing those columns at Memorial Park, that didn't happen overnight. That's the normal process of deterioration. To do that work is gonna take a special crew to put those, put those con, columns in.
That's, that's true. Can I give you an example real quick? Do you see that picture in front of you of a street sweeper?
Yeah.
Okay, that street sweeper was purchased in 2019. It costs $11,000, and it has been sitting in the maintenance shed ever since. And I walked around taking my orientation through the maintenance shed and found that it has not been adapted to the tractor. The maintenance crew attempted to adapt it to the tractor, could not get it to fit, and there sits $11,000. So, did I follow up, Paul Preszulinski? Yes, I did, sir. I called John Deere, and I found out that this $11,000 sweeper was purchased in 2019, and it does adapt to our tractor, but our man couldn't put it on there, and the poor guys, they worked like heck, they are hard workers, but no follow-up. That's where you need a director, and I can, I can name 15 more things like this, but I thought I'd bring this to your attention. So there is a need for somebody to be out in the field directing these workers and monitoring efficiency. And, and any type of building that has columns that are deteriorating, they need to be addressed. So just as polite as I can be, these things, we have, we have 10 or, 10 or eight, eight or 10 vehicles at the maintenance shop parked outside that, that probably run, but everybody just parked their cars and bought new vehicles in the past. When I got here, there sits all the vehicles, there sits the lifeguard vehicle. So I'm gonna have to do something about the lifeguard vehicle next. I've got John Deere working on this sweeper. I'm either gonna have to pay them $1,500 to adapt it to our tractor, or I'm gonna find out if maybe our mechanic at the golf course can adapt it to our tractor, but I'll get her done.
Well, I, I, look, I, I'm not here to debate...
Thanks for that, Superintendent.
You know, I, I, I went out there and seen the deplorable conditions at the golf course in it, in the buildings, and it didn't start last year or the year before. They've been going downhill, and, you know, a lot of this stuff either wasn't maintained or put on a maintenance list and by the previous superintendent. So if you see it, I don't see what the big hassle is because that, you're the, you're the head dog. You should be going around and you got your forte of being in, in the construction trades and that you, you could go, you could go around and say, yeah, and you're already doing it, that's great. So on a weekly basis, I don't see why you couldn't make your weekly tour and go to these spots and say, you know, you guys, we're gonna focus on this. Let me finish, let me finish. And it's just like with that street sweeper. Did you call Cranston and say, hey, can you come out here and look at this thing? Can you guys do something for me on it? You went to John Deere. Now, that's why we got a central maintenance division.
I had to go to John Deere to make sure that it adapts to the John Deere tractor we have. Now, my next move is to go to the mechanic at, at the golf course, because that's the mechanic that knows how to put something like this together. Now, I did go to Cranston on the cars that are sitting in the parking lot, and Cranston said that he would look at those one at a time. I, I instructed the workers to get those cars one at a time in there, and they're too busy right now. They, they don't have the time, they're nine people short. I can't write them up for something when they have, they have a thousand things to do and I got one more item for them to do. So it, it's, as you can see, this here is a picture of the fence post at the Patriot Park. All of these, all of these are being pushed up by the high-water table. See? Now, Paul, I can, I can surely go around and, and take care of the contractors and get bids, but when I, when I have to go to a, a building and see three different prices for, from a contractor, that, that could very much take three-quarters of a day, just showing each contractor what they need to bid on and build, and put together bid documents. But that's, that's in the job description I'm gonna send Sean Fitzpatrick for the director to do, because I have other things to do, which is right here, and you're all welcome to read that.
Well, I think that, I think that that's a good effort that you put forth, but my, my whole bottom line here is this, is you keep talking about having nine, X amount of need for workers, so maybe you need to cut that in half of your need and pay some people a, a better wage that were, have more experience in these maintenance items. And...
Well, now, this is gonna take, start getting this stuff...
Mayor Perry had a comment. One second, let's, Mayor Perry had a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilman Preszulinski, I'd like to offer you a little bit of what I see from my vantage point. Councilman, first of all, you said that Mr. Shin should have contacted Cranston Harris to take a look at this street, street sweeper, or whatever it is that was just purchased in 2019. That very possibly would have voided out any warranty that was left on it. That's why you go to the manufacturer.
I didn't say, wait a minute, I didn't say work on it. I said to look at it, you know?
All right, well...
Don't misinterpret what I'm saying, sir.
Okay, sorry.
That, that...
Sorry, I'll try to, I'll try to do better. Okay, continuing on, when I came into office and hired Mr. Shin, the first thing I told him was that his park department was not very productive, that he needed to take a look at that. He has done that. And what he had was, he had two people that, talking in terms that I'm sure that you understand, Mr. Preszulinski, working in the steel industry, anybody that's, that's a working hand, they call him a mechanic. He had two good mechanics that were very productive, but they were made up to be what we call working foremen, which took them away from doing what they did best, reduced the quantity of work they put out, and then they were chasing everybody else around watching the day, what they did. Now, I will say that what I've seen to date is that Ms. Eason and Mr. Shin are the nerve center of our park department. They do more behind the scenes than I think anyone in this meeting realizes, including myself. I'm surprised all the time. Right now, Mr. Shin has been working very hard on the North Point Pavilion, which from day one I said was a boondoggle, a disaster. All I heard about when, after that thing was built, was that how much, why did the elevator ever, never work? Because it was always blowing, sand was blowing into it, water was getting in the pit. Well, neither one of those were accurate. What it was, was it was a design-build contract, and the entity that has a design build is gonna, is gonna be held accountable very shortly, that it was under design. To keep elevators running, all the circuitry has to stay cool. You know that, Mr. Preszulinski, you're mechanically oriented, and they were not. We took a look at that, but because it was done years before, we had a, we had to have an engineer take a look at the, at the conditions and run the calculations, which Ed searched far and wide to do that. He found someone, a, a, a professional engineer to do the calfs, and the calfs yielded that the reason the elevator didn't work was because it was under, it was not cooled adequately. There were two wall-mounted air conditioners that were undersized. This was a design-build contract. The contractor is gonna be held accountable. You also, next time you get down to the lakefront, walk through that North Point Pavilion, and you'll see all the structural members that support the upper deck are all showing substantial surface rust already. We both know, both Don and Paul Preszulinski being in the steel industry, that anytime, whenever you apply a coating to steel, the key ingredient is surface preparation. You have good surface preparation and your coating, whatever it is, lasts. You can see this same surface rust everywhere in the stairwells going up to the second level. So Mr. Shin is, has, has been, he spends a lot of time on the phone with vendors, with subcontractors who've done work that is now failing, that need to come back and fix their work. The reason he needs this, is that the right term, director, Ed? The reason he needs this director is because he saw the inefficiencies that existed with the work crew. He needed people that were worker bees and not working foremen. Since making the two people that were excellent mechanics, making them strictly workers now instead of roaming foreman, he has seen a tremendous in, increase in efficiency and work output. He's, and the individual that he wants to make up as the director knows the facilities in Michigan City. He has been part of our park department since Don, you and I were on the council. He knows the facilities, he's, he knows where everything's at, he knows what to look for. He is the guy that you need in a hundred thousand model-a-year club, making sure everybody's doing their job and things are on top. This is why we're asking, we, we, to travel in this direction. Actually, we shouldn't even have to ask because since we're not spending any additional money, this is not an appropriation, this is merely a realignment of funding. We're not asking for extra money, and because of that, this is pretty much, in my opinion, not to be insulting, I, 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 I don't try to be, but this is an administration-type decision to get more bang for our buck, to have our facilities better maintained. That's what I see, and I see, I see Shannon is extremely productive... And I see, I see Shannon is extremely productive. Ed is extremely productive in having a director that will be everywhere making sure that the efficiency of the workers is, is what it should be, but what it has not been since I've been in city government, which was two thousand and twelve. And I, I paid attention to it back then. This is definitely an improvement that we ask you to understand, ask you to understand.
Thank you, Mayor Perry. Uh, Ms. Easton.
Shannon. Shannon, Sean's calling you.
Yeah, one moment.
Eddie?
Yeah.
Can you take that flow chart down?
Yes.
I got a flow card, flow chart on my screen. I don't know. There you go. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I kind of disappeared. So I just want to kind of draw everybody back to the hierarchy conversation. This is no different than the lifeguards. So at the current structure that we have right now, we have nine full-time employees. Two of them are supervisors. They're lateral employees. We don't have the top person that answers to the superintendent. And I think drawing all these conversations in, the reason for it is we need to retain that hierarchy that we had. Um, to answer a few questions, the director position was lost in two thousand and seventeen. Um, Yvonne can vouch for this. The city was in dire financial straits due to tax caps and not collecting taxes in La Porte County um, for many years. We lost nine full-time employees. They weren't all maintenance. Two of them were from the zoo. We lost our recreation director. There was kind of across the board, we took a hit. Um, but what Mr. Shin is saying is, out of those nine that we need to restore, we've restored none. The most important one to restore right now would be the maintenance director. Every department within the park department has a director. And it's the same as.
I'm sorry.
You need your assistants to fill in when that director's not there, but you need that hierarchy. You have to have your point person to answer to. And that's what we're asking for. And I think everybody's delving into, why wasn't this done? Why wasn't that done? In all honesty, as council members, look at the park department's capital list that has rolled through you guys for the twenty-six years I've been here. Um, and it's no fault of the park department that things have not been accomplished. We have an operating fund. We don't have a capital fund. We get our capital from you. So, yes, our buildings have been dilapidated, things have been overlooked. That's a different conversation. The city only has so much money. Um, our capital plan that we produced last year was forty-three million dollars, if you include our master plan items. Forty-three million dollars just from the park. This is a separate issue. This is restoring a hierarchy to the maintenance department, which is our biggest and most important department, in my opinion. Um, so if we can just like rein that conversation back into, this is not a request for money.
Right.
This is the park department restructuring within our own approved budget that you approved. We are not losing any jobs at all. If you ride through it, we're not losing jobs. We're restructuring. And we're paying for it within our approved budget that you approved. So the decision for you tonight is, is, we're asking you to change the salary order to add a position within an amount of pay. Under Indiana statutes, the park department is allowed to move positions around, appoint different positions. We're just asking you to make your salary order match our restructure. It's, it's that simple. And I think we got off on so many tangents. That got.
I mean, I don't think there are any tangents. I mean, you know, it's a reason that we're members that are public elected to oversee these processes by the state. So it's, it's well within our purview to make these requests or get clarity on what it is that you're requesting to do while you're doing it. And, um, you know personally, from every year that I've been on the council, I request, I, I made the comment that there should be more people with the park department. I mean, being a ward councilman, I get calls all summer long about Adams Park not being mowed and, you know, I don't, I'm not equipped to articulate what you explained to me about the water table and all that to the people when they want to go out and enjoy the park. I mean, I understand that you're understaffed and I would be willing to support getting you staff that you actually need, but with, uh, without a detailed plan as to where the people will go, who will be assigned to what, you know, it, it, it's a bigger discussion than what we're having right now. And just to get the clarity on what this is you're proposing right now, I think this conversation was invaluable because I didn't understand it prior to this evening. So I got a better understanding of it now, and I think that it's something that we should move forward with. And we should also have a discussion about getting the support team for this individual so they're better equipped to do the task that, that they're assigned to do. So, uh, was there any more comments on this? Uh, Councilman Giegus, uh, Council, Councilmember Giegus.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I do support, uh, this change in position. It's not costing us any money. And I also support looking into getting more help because the parks do a tremendous job. It's a big job. And I think they need to replace some of those people they lost. So I hope you support this. I really am in favor. Thank you.
Who said, I'm sorry, uh, Councilman Don Priswalinski.
Yeah, just in, in Eddie and I have talked about this, or Mr. Shin and I have talked about this. And, uh, as far as buildings being in dilapidated condition, uh, because I use the north golf course quite a bit during the summer along with me and, uh, a, a, a lot of other people here, and visitors especially. They come from out of town, around the holidays, beach people come and they use that golf course. And that clubhouse is in deteriorated condition. There's siding falling off of it. There's paint peeling off of it. The soffits are rotted, the fascias are rotted. The shingles are falling off the top of that building. And that building needs dire repair. So I know Mr. Shin's aware of that. And I'm just letting you know, Mayor, that that building needs dire repair and reconstruction work. Thank you.
Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Pardon? Paul Priswalinski, uh, who is that?
Uh, this is Phil Lachford.
Oh, okay, uh, Paul Priswalinski, um, right after Mr. Lachford, Dave.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead. Thank you, um. Thank you. I just wanted to, um, this will only take thirty seconds, but uh, Mr. Shin has developed a plan to try to improve the park department with being the most fiscally responsible as possible. By that, I mean not adding any dollars, making some reorganization to make improvements in, in trying to be prudent fiscally as well. So I appreciate any consideration and, uh, that you would give to the plan. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Lachford. Appreciate that. Uh, Paul Priswalinski.
Thank you, Chairman Fitzpatrick. I, uh, take exception to the remarks that we got off on tangents. And, uh, I too, as Chairman Fitzpatrick stated that we're gathering facts and information and trying to piece this all together because we, I, I know that I went out and looked at a lot of these facilities last year. I know that Don has. I don't know, I can't speak for anybody else, but you know, I know one thing. When I went out to the golf course, when I went out to, uh, Patriots Park, I didn't like what I saw. And, uh, I'm not saying that I'm agai- against funding things, but we have to find the right mechanism and be fiscally responsible on fin- on funding things. Now, um, Ed, you found out a lot of things wrong and you listed a lot of them. And I think other people saw what you're talking about. Now, the one thing in this North Point Pavilion, I want you to think about something here. A lot of people forget that the majority of the north end is in the TIF district. And I think some people forget the funding engine that that is. So with that being said, yeah, I, I have some, I have some ideas on, uh, uh, how to fund things. It doesn't out, it doesn't all have to come out of the city coffers. So when we move, as we move forward, we need to remember why the TIFs were put in place. It's a funding mechanism. And I can remember back when Mr. Beeler was the mayor and they were wanting to pave the main parking lot. And I think that's, uh, uh, that the last time it was paved, they used TIF money to pave that parking lot. So with that being said, I'm, I'm good with, I'm good with this. But I hope that Mr. Shin, you keep us abreast and come out with a priority list on what you think needs to happen first in, in the park system. And, uh, then, and then go from there. You, you need to come to the council, they have a sit-down and say, this is my number one priority for this year. Because we can't get it all done in one year, you know, Ed? It, it, because it's, it's getting to the point where it's, it's creeping up on us. I understand what you're saying there. Thank you.
Uh, were there any other, uh, questions or comments? Um, is there a recommendation for the council?
Uh, I make a motion that we, uh, approve the, uh, change of positions or create that position.
Uh, I support that. Um, all the favors, sing if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. So if there are no other discussion, I don't think we have anything else. Financial matter, uh, who's, uh, who called for adjournment?
I would like to thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you for your time.
We appreciate you for your time as well. And trust me, I would be in support of helping you get the staff you need to maintain the, the park department to the standard that it should be. So if this is the first step, then it's, it's a great step forward, so.
Thank you so much.
So let's, uh, make a motion for adjournment.
All right, second that. All right, good night, everyone.
Good night. Good, good seeing everybody. Good seeing you. Take care.
All right, take care.